The next case law here is Z 2712, 614 690 South Road. You sure make sure any of you want to join in? You both saw where you tested your individual?
I did.
And the other 20, North Avenue East, Frank L. Dray.
My name is Fernando, M A M U P L, K F R L A M D E Z, 268 Marcella.
Oh, that's okay. The Navy Division of Southern Department of Agriculture has an applicant, 614 627 Royal City. You're all supposed to be familiar with Mr. Fernandez, who was in this court on many occasions. He's built many projects throughout the city of Elizabethan. I think he's well known for quality projects that he builds. In fact, he completes them in a timely manner. And most of those projects are, they are put aside and put to stethes. Well, Mr. Fernandez, this particular project involves a property that Mr. Fernandez purchased back in May of last year. The site that he bought, a three-story eighteen-unit building, once Mr. Fernandez purchased the site and the project came along with it. He had an opportunity to analyze the site plan and the project. He felt that there was a better way to do this, that it needed a better design, that it needed better security, that it needed better parking arrangement, and above all, it needed better appearance. He'd rendered it for you, which was what the ultimate goal of the little foot like. You will also know that there's a four-story building directly across the street, which was reported through several years ago, which was just completed and is being rented. I'm sure you've checked the site and you'll note that this building that's being proposed, my building, has much better appearance and much better scale than the building that's just been completed across the street. And again, I wish to emphasize the fact that Mr. Fernandez has built any number of buildings in this town, many of which you're familiar with. And I know that there's been concern lately as to the appearance of certain buildings and textures and colors. And I find that long before it became a concern in the sport, it was a concern of Mr. Fernandez. If you're familiar with the buildings, we're testable is Almora. You'll know the buildings have very handsome facades. The new building that he constructed at 214 260 West Grant was reported through last year. Also has a very good appearance. And I find that a lot of the larger buildings that are being built in Elizabethan, we've our architect, Alton Lima, and he's helped us spend his time on aesthetics of some of these projects. And in fact, I'd like you to listen to the testimony to understand why we're doing it. The difference is we put this application on the old application. What other than closing, Mr. Fernandez said, my first question is? Mr. Fernandez, you are the managing member of 614 627 Royal City, is that correct?
It is.
And you purchased this property in May 2012, I believe?
Yes, I did.
And the site itself was vacant and was conjured by 200 feet, is that correct?
There were two structures on the ground.
Which were demolished?
Yes.
And the site was approved for an eighteen-unit building in 2006, is that correct?
That's correct.
And when you purchased the premises, that those approvals and the plans came with it?
Yes.
And after you had an opportunity to study and examine the plans, you came to the conclusion that there were certain deficiencies?
I did.
And you outlined for me a number of those deficiencies. And I could go over them with you, if you could just explain in some small detail as to what you thought of the original design. I understand that you've changed the parking arrangements, is that correct?
I have.
And in what way have you changed the parking arrangement?
We've created the entrance to the central building and entrances and exits of the building with a motorized door, which will add security. Add security. Parking is to the right and left of either driveway, along from the front to the rear of the building. We relocated the second staircase to the rear of the building, which also gave a better flow of the parking area.
And the original plan called for essentially just exiting around the building down to South Road, is that correct?
It is.
The building as it's now configured also provides for a right side road. Didn't exist in the original plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
And in fact, the parking drive was directly up against the upright parking side road.
It was.
The original plan, although it was eighteen units called for rather large wall spaces on the upper floors,
Yes, I did.
It really had the purpose of maintaining high decks and gardens.
That's correct.
And we were seeking to eliminate that.
Yes, I did.
One of the things that I noted in the plan, one of the things that you explained to me, was that we cited the elevator. And tell us why that's so?
What we did was strip the elevator from the interior corridor and moved it towards the street so that every elevator lobby is lit by natural light with a six-foot by six-foot window, so that the residents exit the elevator, they exit to a lobby that is naturally lit.
Do you want to mark, A1? Can you show us where the elevator is located? Yeah, this is a progress of the structure as we'll appear when we finish.
As you enter into the front of the elevator, you'll find the elevator facing you and the entire elevator lobby runs through the elevation.
So that's open to the outside in the sense that you can see through it from the outside with natural light and you can see people and actually look at that.
You can, yes.
And the original configuration had the elevator at the back in a dark area.
It had actually the elevator stalls behind where it is now in the corridor leading to the apartments, which I'm moving and also increase the circulation of the tenants when they're exiting, entering their apartments.
Also, security wise?
Of course, yes.
You also agreed that it's more secure by closing the five-month-old buildings, is that correct?
What we decided to do was to remove the style of the building, all the corners of the ground, and we decided to use a masonary, C M U blocks and cover that with oversight to break. And we matched the elevation with oversight windows. In the lower brick section on the right-hand side of the street, two large windows. It allows the residents to see out of the parking area, but the public cannot see in.
And you talked about the gate that now traffic comes in and out through one gate area. Is that how you propose in terms of security and access to the tenants?
In order to enter the parking area, you'll have a remote. In order to exit, you just need to approach the gates and then you will open from the interior.
The original plan had a little bit of a middle point, no, last thing, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what have we done to the existing space in this project?
We've created, as you see the landscape in there, then the front right-hand and left of the building, also the walkway leading to the apartment.
What about offering, in our progress?
We have a decorative fence that links from the side, the side of the apartments. Those fences will be covered with landscaping as well.
Now, the new project also, is that correct?
That's correct.
There had been a four-story, I'm sorry. There had been a fight that I was granted with regards to the last application, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And we can see it's additional height.
Yes.
Now, the apartments that were proposing to be all two-bedroom apartments?
They are.
And there would be nine apartments on each floor?
That's right.
And the plan has configured also to be open space and apartment apartments in this project?
That's correct.
Now, here's a four-story structure directly across the street?
Yes.
That was recently completed?
That's correct.
And this is presently being rented?
It is.
This building is essentially medical in height and in terms of density, it's open across the street?
It is.
Should the board strike that? You already put in, you strike that again. The ability to move over in accordance to the approval of the constructional market?
Yes, I did.
And that footing or that flow of footprint would serve for this project as we're submitting it for the project that's had been approved before?
Yes, it would.
And that's the sparkling structure?
Yes.
Should the board approve this application to have some ideas for when this project would be completed?
Within six months.
And I imagine you already have a waiting list for tenants to do this properly?
Oh, I do.
And that's because all of the early units are rented?
All of the early units are rented, yes.
And that includes the new structure that's described on West Grant Street, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Do you wish to ask any questions to this witness?
I do.
Commissioner, your next.
Mr. Fernandez, you were saying that prior to...
My first one.
You were saying that prior to the, this proposal, that the existing building was going to be built with three stories with walls?
That's correct.
And there was a height variance in existence at that point?
Yeah, the first application was very strange in that it was three stories, but they requested a height variance because they had these walls on the upper, the apartments on the upper floor. And one of the problems with Mr. Fernandez was, he has a certain, and I'll answer this question. His tenant said he has a basic, basic deed and he's sort of clientele of the caterers. And those walls would provide a space that really had no purpose and that putting more people in the apartments, which is not something he wanted to do. Yet he was left with essentially this area that could be developed or shouldn't be developed. And that's the genesis of us coming back during this.
So with the initial plan you already had, the fourth floor that you were building, it's just that it was passed from third floor initially?
It's lost space, yeah.
So we're not really, this isn't a major rewriting of the original plan, it's just?
It's about nine feet difference.
Okay, all right. That's fine, thank you.
Any questions, Commissioner?
James Oliver, Chairperson, and Commissioner.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I'm Mr. Pierre, this is my second seat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, you prepared the site then in actual disapplication, did you not?
Yes, we did.
Could you just briefly describe the building as being proposed?
Right, the building is essentially the same building that was previously approved. It was nine units on the floor. And the big difference in this application and the previous application was, the building of the previous application was set to one side of the property so that we could have a different parking configuration. And when many came in and we looked at this and he expressed all his concerns, we kind of revisited the sighting of the building on the lot. And that's when we came up with this configuration. What I have asked out to everyone, there's two sheets. And one sheet has, both sheets have green on it. But what they also showed you was that the sheet that has more green on it is this current layout. Sheet was originally green and more white, was the first approved. And that white area is actually painted. So the previous scheme essentially blacktopped most of the site and the parking was literally up against the right and left-hand boundaries of the site. So by settling the building, a number of things were gone. I pointed to the yard areas in the original application, which by moving the building eliminated the yard areas. And it also reduced the amount of blacktop, which gave us more green space. So the open space on this application has jumped up thirteen hundred square feet. It's about a thirty percent increase of the original open space where it was from three thousand something to four thousand something. So that was a big increase. Then, in the building, as Mr. Fernandez and Anil talked about, some changes, relocation of elevator, as you go down the corridor, two different apartments. If you look at the floor plan, typical floor plan, which is on the fourth sheet and it's G 1011. If you start from the left side of the plan for the elevators, down the hallway, each location where you actually enter the apartments, hallway gets a bit of a bit wider at the bottom. So it's a much nicer feeling going down the hallway from the tower than actually increasing the width of the hallway at the entrances to the units. Typically, the level is multi-banked. The current width, five or sixteen, is continues from one end to the other. Whereas if you look at this plan, you'll see actually widening significantly at the empty points that we found in some of the, you know, nicer feeling within the apartment. And it's kind of carried that through even in the apartments since there's some things you try to cut it up, upscale it all again. So with this part of your analysis, the difference from this application and the previous application, the height areas is a very significant one. We get that that lost space has turned into a full floor now. But as far as the yard areas is a little dented, we've removed them. Parking, we actually have the required parking in the original application. We met the portable requirement and two of those portable spaces were actually handling spaces. In this application, we made whole view parking, requires for the apartments, and then the two can be kept on top of that on-site.
Jim, talk about the elevator tower. I'm curious to see how that changes the whole aspect of security and access to the building?
Well, as I pointed, the original building had its elevators there on that left corner. This one, that's with. The difference here is that Mr. Fernandez wanted that to be a more private space that they like. Previous to that elevator was further back in the building. Whereas this one is a window. Each floor, when you exit the elevator, you step out into a small lobby area that has natural daylight. So it's just a nicer place today. So it's a way that's set, thank you.
And you also really enhanced the security by having entry to the front of the building as opposed to walking into the building?
No, you always went into the front of the building, but then you had to go further back down hallway. Now, maybe before setting the building, I can see it was waiting by the elevator.
Talk about the fact that facade has changed in this building in terms of where you can make it down?
Yeah, this, the building looked like it's sitting on its stills. What Mr. Fernandez wanted was to have the whole building look like it, you know, like it's sitting on the first floor of a building. Instead of having hollow underneath with the parking. So he brought the masonry finish down, which now looks, you don't realize it, you know, it's a full parking garage in here.
Talk about the exterior finishes and colors of the building, so that we have a look at it.
Well, it's very contemporary looking. It's got the quality materials, it's got a brick on the bottom, it's got metal panels, and then the concrete panels. So it's basically it's a high-quality scale building.
You've been involved in some of the projects?
I've, sorry?
Are you sure this is not quality work?
Most of the buildings have, were called a traditional building architecture.
Right.
Traditional building architecture? Whole wooden buildings, this is a very contemporary look. It's a very good-looking building. It's selected by scholars. I have to give the building credit because this is his paternity and something like that.
Your representation in the planner's report about analyzing decorative fencing and appropriate process between the project and certain pieces have been?
The site command that we're in Tecton actually shows fencing buffering the perimeter of the property. So if there's a car garage, there'll be no headlights going onto any properties because it's completely fenced, the entire perimeter of the property. There is like the landscaping and it shows landscaping in the front. There's lots of trees in the back of the area.
And I see there are no fences in the front. That's going to be carried up through the front of the premises, as I understand it, to Fernandez's testimony?
On the right side there?
Right, is that going to carry the site form fence with?
No, that's not. There are fences in those, you only did already.
Okay. I don't think we're able to speak, Mr. Chairman. Do you wish to ask any questions to this witness?
I have one.
Commissioner, your next.
Excuse me. Mr. Blair, on page G 200, the front elevation of this building shows an ornamental fence flying to the north side of this building.
That actually takes place differently from the other thing. So like the ornamental fence, that goes from the edge of each building to the side. That's, that's correct. So then, and then set back at the exit of the building.
Right.
That's the black wall fence you can see on the rendering?
Okay, now on the Tecton site plan, page two of eight, shows the board of wood parking deck. Above the building core has a new five-foot-high living fence, which coincides with this other page. My only question is, how far back does that fence come?
This fence was like the way it was last. Did that look like the ornamental fence?
Right, my hand, man.
You turned your right hand.
The ornamental fence was shown on G 200, runs parallel to the street. It runs to the right and left.
Because on the Tecton site plan, page two of eight, it shows new five-foot-high living fence running perpendicular to the street alongside the building. Just above the building core.
What page do you want me to?
Two of eight. Show the detail of the parking structure?
Well, that's, it's under the building, that fence. Well, actually, what's happened now, Commissioner, is the masonry wall takes the place of that, there's a masonry wall there.
Okay.
And then the fence only goes from the masonry ends to the property line.
Okay.
And then going down the length of the property, it shows a board-on-board fence.
Board-on-board now, which leads me to my next question. I'm driving down South Broad Street. Am I going to be able to see this board-on-board fence? Because I know that the buildings there are pretty tight to each other. They may actually not see it, which is fine. I just, you know, because it's got a lot of landscaping, it looks great. I just want to make sure that we're not going to see it, we're not going to fence.
Well, the front landscaping, which is shown on, I believe, page four of eight, should help screen, you know, minimize the deal with the board of wood. They might catch lips or something.
Yeah, I'm not too worried about catching his lips of it. Well, because again, like I said, these buildings are pretty tight to each other in that area. So because it's got that masonry wall that kind of covers up the entire apartment deck, which is great. You know, and, and he's got landscaping in front of it.
Right.
It's fine, just want to make sure we're not going to be able to see that from the screen.
It's minimized.
That's fine.
Commissioner, do you have any questions? Mr. Blair, a question, I was looking at the site plan here, I'm looking at the drawing. I'm not sure that all the landscaping that's in here is there, by source. Is that a knowledge?
That's fine, for example, Tecton's showing number four B. I believe there's more landscaping on the Tecton than even the rendering.
Is it, I'm looking at landscaping here?
And you see the people coming, coming up the walkway? That's not showing the rendering, so actually it's probably a little more landscaping than even the rendering shows. You know, in the front of the building. And this is what we've built.
Right. The sky is brown. Sky is a color, is it? Do you want to comment? Oh.
Parking, that's more, yes.
Yeah, the smartest answer we've got here, this parent application. All right, Commissioner, any questions to this witness?
Yeah. Do we have any other?
Hey, my address is New York.
John, Daniel Cabal, address is 388 Washington Road, Suite E, San Antonio, Jersey.
Mr. Chairman, we're often asking about the places for structural plan. Yeah, we recognize this for definitely what's more than times. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Donald, describe the site as well.
The site is 20,000 square feet. It's rectangular in shape, it's in the C2 zone, within the summer, street area along South Broad Street. The area is a mixed-use area, as the world may know. And there's a mix of commercial uses, car wash, bakery, pizza wheel, along with some quasi-public house of worship uses, residential uses, and some medical uses.
Sorry, John, I can't hear you, this side can't speak up.
Some residential uses as well as some medical uses at the corner of South Broad and something.
What is my address, Rockford, New York?
Long Carver, which is a minor arterial roadway, South Broad is in the South-North Road. South seems to be a corrective investment, a minor arterial roadway. So you have, I have three different.
So you have, I have 351 North Broadway, which is at near the corner of Grove Street. Have a four-story, multiple family, uh, structure here, that's four stories. Uh, further to the south, near Garden Street, uh, near the commercial zone, Northern 109 and 451, North Broadway Street, which is also a four stories. Then, have you, do you have? 451 Northern Broadway, Northern 109. Um, okay, maybe right, might be South Broadway then.
Rightness.
Rightness. I, I, I think correct, that is, I'm thinking 109, okay, do you want to get your hands on it? And of course, I think correct, so it's South Broadway at that, at that location. Then, across the street, which is 613, South Broadway is the building that was, was being built, is definitely in that area. That's also four stories that you approved, I have to ask you, here's.
Um, could you describe, you analyzed all the old plans and the new plans, right?
Yes.
Could you describe for some of the benefits in your opinion of the new plan as opposed to the old plan?
Sure. If, if you look at both the plans, first of all, uh, first thing that stands out is you have a great open space. Uh, to a magnitude of over, I think, 1300 square feet, uh, which is a best estimate over the, uh, the old plan. You have nine additional appropriate apartments, uh, which will be occupied by also professional houses, always at the two-bedroom, uh, housing type. That's more than anything that those walls that were provided in the, uh, in the first initial scheme. You have an elevator that will be in the front as opposed to being back, uh, which gives safer alternative, uh, for people that are in the elevator. And from the standpoint of aesthetics, I think it's more pleasing, obviously, uh, with the enhancements, the glass enhancements of the elevator in front. Uh, you have the front, just like the portico, as you can see there by the entrance. Uh, that also is more, uh, aesthetically pleasing, uh, and to the overall appearance of the structure. Have better circulation under the building with the changes to the parking, uh, circulation, which, uh, moves the stairwell, uh, away outside of the parking field. Uh, and that is also safer. You have substantial new vertical landscaping, which is down into the property. Uh, and you have improved the yard dimensions. In fact, you were elevating, uh, from the right side of the yard areas, which is a, I mean, eleven, twelve areas. And the driveway with the line on the building, uh, creates a whole landscape over to the north property line. So I think all those really are substantial improvements to the plan.
In fact, it's an elevator building, makes all the apartments handicap accessible, is that correct?
That is correct.
You are showing handicap parking before construction?
Yes, there were two handicap parking in addition to being the full requirement for parking on the recesses.
Could you go over the various, is there any request of connection with this application, please?
Sure. We have a conditional use variance. It's, uh, we don't need only condition set for it on the schedule three. Uh, and a number of those deal with, uh, the, uh, height of the building and three-quarters of the height being, uh, the size you need in terms of, uh, a distance of 36 feet, uh, and some inches, uh, to the property lines. We don't need those, of course. Uh, so there's a requirement of the side yard, uh, for the left side yard, for the front yard, for instance. Uh, we need 36.25 feet. We have 15 feet, which is adequate. Uh, and there's also a requirement, uh, for the, uh, for the rear yard, uh, which is seven feet, uh, which, uh, is, uh, what we needed. That is proposed, and we're about a fifth of the requirement. Uh, we also need, uh, a square footage of bed, uh, 400 square feet, and we almost need that, uh, a little off by seven percent there. We made it by 93%, uh, which is less than, obviously, 10%. There's a less than 10% deficit there. Uh, we also.
Those are the schedule three variances, right?
Yes, they are.
Do you know anybody who did those variances from any applications?
Given the, the average size of some properties, it's very, very hard to meet these three-quarter requirements.
Now, there have been high variances granted in the broader applications, is that correct?
Yes, there is still a high variance.
And the application has been, actually reduces the number of variances that are being requested, is that correct?
That is correct.
We are looking at the right side variance?
Yes.
Now, would you go over the, um, threshold criteria for the, uh, for the variances being requested?
Sure. I think we need the, uh, the minimum criteria in terms of, it's no substantial deficits of public good with this application. In fact, it's the opposite. It adds to the enhancement of the neighborhood. It adds to the, uh, enhancement and reputation of the housing stock within the city of Elizabeth. Uh, it provides, uh, a very valuable alternative to, to other housing stock. Uh, and as you can see from, uh, the rendering, it does figure itself. It's really a very attractive building. Uh, stone, uh, and brick, and those glass enhancements, it really adds to the area. It adds cadence to the neighborhood between, um, Bay Avenue and Southern Street. Uh, this building won't let the other building really access the focal point, uh, in terms of the current, the interior core, that I think, minor interior core.
And so you have the building, you have the building across the street?
Yes, 613, South Broadway. Uh, so it really, uh, is, is very appropriate for the area, uh, in, uh, for conditioning use, and it benefits, uh, the, the area. The project has benefited, uh, by its presence, uh, you know, along the, uh, minor.
Is this, is this my plan of the standards?
Uh, yes, it is. I think, uh, there are a number of, of standards, a lot of planning that's done. And Elizabeth is consistent as, uh, uh, development and redevelopment, uh, plan, uh, of the state, which calls for, uh, an excellent infield area. This is an excellent infield area to the, to the area to, to the, uh, east. Uh, the residential properties are, uh, long plots, so there's a significant buffer area to the other side. And a good mix of residential and commercial, which you want. And a C2 creating the commercial zone, you want that. Synergy that is created by a mix of residential properties and commercial properties. So that each other, each one of those uses can support the other.
Does each of those?
So each of those uses can support the other use.
Is this property consistent with the master plan?
Uh, yes, it is consistent with the master plan in terms of, it is, uh, it will enhance the area. It's not a detriment to the public good. It is delivering to the, uh, um, the integrity of, of the summer plan, uh, I think, in 2006, master plan.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, any questions, Miss Witten? None? Still, there are any others? I have another question, Mr. Chairman. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak either for or against this application? Please come forward. Please come forward, sir. I hope you change your mind and push your silent skirt. It doesn't matter, you're just going to do the whole thing, not the rest of it.
Another six months.
Go your way, Mr. Mayor.
61781, Elizabeth, 702. And I know, 619. First question, uh, whose question I want to ask is, uh, did whoever take the measurements of this building certify the, the, uh, the property line was seven foot?
Can you speak to it, uh?
Yes, I want to know if the person who took the measurements off of, uh, of the property line was certified, and it was certified at seven foot. Which needs to be?
Certified.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
He wants to know whether the person who took the measurements was certified.
Which measure?
Off the building, where the building can be installed, put up. In other words, you have to be seven foot off the property line with existing property lines to establish the building. Did they think that in Elizabeth they certified, or didn't?
Would this board have that information, in the service of government?
Sure. Well, the managers providing the survey, it's a licensed survey, a survey, we have a signed concealed survey, have submitted the application. Mr. Guerrero, who prepared the plans, is a licensed architect, so he certainly qualified himself. So, um, the people who provided the plans and information are all duly licensed by the state. So it, it is in fact seven foot? So you said? Well, that's, I said, what they're representing, and we have a reason to believe that, that's not true. I think that should be questioned, before anything is okay, so to speak. Okay, now, in the back of one of the properties I have, you know, there's a tree there. And they, uh, took the branches off the backside of that tree, so they could build their building. Left the other tree, that's the remainder of the tree there. Now, nobody told me what was going on. Nobody told me if they could, asking if they could do it, if you tried, they didn't. If they were to ask, they didn't tell them. No problem, they go tree. But they got no respect for the area, almost, in my opinion. Okay, two. They, they just destroyed fence on, on my property. I want a bathroom building, and now it's vacant, everything's empty. I can go walk by from my backyard into that construction site. It's unsafe. Should have taken care of it before. They put their scaffolding on and started building. Again, nobody heard. Okay, number three. Number four. This is a small area, and I concern the pollution, outlet pollution, that's gonna be in the backyards that, uh, now I just heard they're gonna shoot the bottom floor, the ground level floor. Right now, they've got pillars, all of the, all of the property. And I want to know what they're gonna do about that. We don't need any more pollution in the area. They've got 27, 28 cars here. We're gonna have a big problem. And... Where will the air conditioning install all of that? And what about the noise pollution that's gonna create for 27 units, for 18 units? They're gonna put it on a roof, they're gonna seal it. What are they gonna do with it? That's it, guys. John, David, Jay, Paul.
John, this is all we have, so if you want to translate us, we are outside, help us. Um, I'm welcome. We have a tendency to introduce you to any professional, talk about some of the concerns that, uh, we're asking. He can address to us. We're happy to include you to a meeting and discuss with the followers, we have a trade advice, perhaps you can. Thank you, sir. How much time do you have, something else to add?
No, I'm just wanting to voice my concerns here. Now, uh, it's, it's a big issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address this order, please, one caller? Raise your mic if you think you've done the specific one you're giving, or if you'd love to. Do you hear? State your name and address, please.
Who's in Karen, C A R O, listen.
She don't have to carry this, I think, this one.
Uh, Karen, C A R O, uh, listen to H O H L, H O H L. And I guess it's 627, eight one.
627? 627?
Yes. And my concern was with the overdevelopment in the area, the flooding that we have been experiencing, the overdevelopment in the area. That's my main concern about this. Uh, we're gonna have more flooding in the area for all the properties around here, because we did, did hit water with the flooding. Um, since '07, I had three major floods in my area, in my house, and that's why my main concern is about this. And so, um, when they were, um, bucketing out those buildings, and it was a big area, it was, um, we had some flooding back there with the heavy rains and everything. The flood smell was incredible. It just saturates. And so I'm concerned about. Um, also, we had again, we had, uh, back in January, or was it, end of February, the same thing happened to, with the smell of the flood. And, uh, and I was simply noticed, uh, in that first time in the building, you know, yeah, okay. There was a big puddle of water on that property. Um, it's probably maybe some underground trivia terrace or something from the Elizabeth, because I don't know if you were aware of this. Uh, it used to be a road years ago, back in 1872, that ran through my property, directly through my property, and running, uh, going right through there.
Right through?
Into the property of where the development is. And the, um, I tried to do some research on it. Um, the name of the road is called Brick Lane. And Brick Lane went right through Bridge Island, and then made that right into a lane. And, and it was on the map, I have maps proving, um, it's there in 1872, and it was gone by 1874.
Are there any other members of the audience wishing to address this order? Seeing none? Uh, is that it for your interview? A little bit of work with section, or we stand, uh, um, Commissioners, which pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Yanni Brown, if he can tell us a little bit about the drainage here. Are they, have you reviewed the drainage, are they up to par?
Yeah, Yanni can, uh, has submitted, uh, is providing small water on-site, small water management facilities. Uh, is providing a retention system to, uh, level the amount of runoff to the pro site, uh, to that existing conditions. Uh, we reviewed that, we find, uh, with a submitted piece of, as in accordance with the city standards.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to gather my regard, P, Central Air Units, E units, and U?
The what units?
The Central Air, E units, and U. Tell us what they, about those units, regarding the noise pollution, would you do this for them?
Uh, I, I, I would have to spend a day regarding that. I wish to wear my, uh, shirts and light on that. I just probably don't really know. But the applicants at this point, from the point where they really don't provide that detail, those details usually provide at the time of the documents, um, the applicants, if it's detailed, construction plans, accounting plans, public plans. So, uh, usually at this stage of the application, we really don't have that kind of detailed information.
Would you say, you say, that you have to comply with all the codes, up to date?
Yes, the city does have a noise ordinance, which, um, restricts the amount of noise that can be emitted from the site. So they don't comply with all that, and, um, that would be reviewed at the time of the documents.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Any other questions, Commissioners, comments? Seeing none? What's your?
What should I prove?
What should we do, by the way, should we do that, or is that?
Motion to approve by Commissioner, you may, we have a second. Second by District Attorney, Ms. House. Secretary, we're going.
Assistant, Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Commissioner, please.
Aye.
Commissioner, please.
Aye.
Commissioner, please. Whoever takes it.
Aye.
Commissioner, please. Chairman, please.
Hi, I'd like to say, I hope the board will leave, if something, questions by orders, the residents will answer. Uh, I, hopefully, we'll keep this ready, throughout, and we can have a lot of those purchases, as far as the flooding, seeing whether, uh, if they are in any detention cases to minimize, I don't know what to be, so, hopefully, there's any questions. Is ready to listen for this board? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner, Dixon, second by Rachel Stol, all favor?
Aye.
Major.